Committee of the Board, Theresa Rolle for the Council.
Councilmember Manfield.
Here.
Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Dillander.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
I'm here.
Bruce, did you want to do a roll call for the planning?
Sure, we only have three here.
Okay.
So, Theresa, we've got John and Marty and myself.
All right, Eric, thank you, like, you two. For Parks?
Uh, Parks, there's two of us. So, I mean, we'll just, I'm hoping that everybody quickly introduce themselves so we know who everybody is.
Quick introduction of anybody else who's here for the committee?
Just quickly, just.
Okay, all right, so I'm Betsy Davidson, representing the Lowell Area Recreation Authority.
Perry Beecham, Chairman of the Lowell Parks Commission, and also Chairman of the LARA, which is the Trails, Local Trails.
Al Halbison with the Trails.
Dave Austin with Williams Works Engineering, and I've done work on both the regional and local trail projects.
I'm Nikki Van Blum, National Michigan Trail Specialist for the DNR, so I help administer the Flat River Valley Trails, and also, and am also involved in the Iron Bell Trail with North Country Trail.
Oh, fast, oh, fast.
Tina Dickerman from Friends of Fred Meyer, Mrs. of Rail Trails.
Andrea Petrichak, Director of Trail Development for the North Country Trail Association.
Robert Brown, Chairman of Board of Directors, Fred Meyer Valley Road Trails.
Marty Chambers, Planning Commission. Bruce Barker, Planning Commission Chair. John Gerard, Planning Commission.
Follow me, North Country Trail Commission.
Park.
Silent Conservative. All right, I'll look for now a motion to approve the agenda for the Council. Second. Any discussion or changes? Theresa?
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Hodges.
Yes.
Councilmember Dillander.
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
And Councilmember Cantor.
Yes.
Any citizen comment for items not on the agenda tonight? We'll move now to a discussion regarding the trails.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Dave Austin is here this evening from Williams Works, and he's going to update the Council as to where we are at with our, with our current trail plan. I think there's been some confusion as to where we are at, and he's going to try and hopefully clear up that question and maybe ask, answer any questions that you may have. I know there's also been some concerns regarding the need to change the ordinances pertaining to sidewalks, and our city attorney, Dick One, will be here, and he can, he can kind of guide you through that as well. So, go ahead, Dave.
Thank you, and thanks for providing dinner. So, I'm going to give a pretty broad overview because we've got a few issues here. We've got a couple of things going on here, a couple of great things, several great things in the city of Lowell and in the Lowell community. First of all, we are home to a tremendous trail system locally. The Lowell Area Recreation Authority, as many of you know, was formed many years ago. I'm not going to be able to quote the Perry's old enough to mention it. It was originally formed to take a look at some recreation opportunities that didn't come to fruition at the time, but then went on to focus on developing a community-wide trail system within the Lowell community in Regent Township, Lowell Township, and the city of Lowell. In 2009, that came to fruition when we got a grant to do the first phase of the Lowell Area Recreation Trail that goes from Foreman Road at the elementary school, up G Drive, and then up Alden Nash to the high school. And that was the first phase of a big master plan that, that we have for the whole community. Concurrent with that, if you realize, we don't have trains coming through anymore, but we have a lot of railroad tracks that are in the area. And I was involved in, in helping secure the railway right-of-ways and such for what is now going to be a 125-mile continuous rail trail system from Owasso to Lowell up to Balding, Greenville, and over to Alma. And some of that regional trail system has been in place for quite a while, the section from Greenville to Alma is mainly Lowell's. You're going to hear a little bit tonight from Robert Brown, who will be able to update you on these last segments of that trail that need connecting, and the one that's, that the grants are coming up for here recently is going to be able to connect Lowell to Sarnac and Lowell to Balding using crushed limestone surface. So, while we were building our internal system here in the city of Lowell, the regional trail system, the non-motorized trails, were being developed east of us and north of us. When it's completed, it will be the fifth longest rail trail system in the country. And we should be very proud of it here because it's a tremendous asset if you go to any community that has regional trail systems. It's an economic development feature. In addition to that, however, we, we're in the corner of two rivers, of course. There's a state water trail that's being developed. And then we are home to the North Country Trail, which is a multi-state, over 3,000-mile foot trail, a national trail, and our headquarters are right here in Lowell, Michigan. So, I can't think of a hotter spot in the state of Michigan right now for all the various forms of trail. We also have very thriving businesses in this community, and one of them is a big place over there that makes, does stuff with weed, I guess, I don't know. They're always building things. And those folks still need rail service. And because of that, we're unable to abandon the railway from Foreman Road through town to the east side of town where our rail trail would normally go. And so, we did, we realized this a few years ago, that while the Lowell Area Recreation Trail connects on Foreman Road near Metric Manufacturing, and while that connection goes north, and that's where the next limestone trail will go, we don't have any way to get from that point on Foreman at Metric to the east side of the trail, which will be at Mont Calm Avenue. Theresa, if you can throw up that map, and we've, I've got the maps up here on the trail, and we've also got a board over here. But, but basically, the task was how do we get through, how do we connect those two points? And towards the end of 2015, the DNR funded a study. They asked the Lowell Area Recreation Authority to host a study, but the DNR funded the study, and my firm was hired to look at how do we connect those, what are options for connecting? So, there's a published study, it's available, we can make it available online if those of you haven't seen it. But that study looked at as many combinations as we could think of to get from those two points without building a new trail exclusively, because we can't just build a brand-new trail through the city of Lowell. Al Halbison is a bridge engineer, hinted that we might build a bridge from point A to point B, four-mile bridge or something, but that's not going to happen. So, what did we come up with? We looked at all kinds of combinations. Do we, you know, how do we connect these things? And the challenges we had at the time is that if you think about it, if you were walking from those two points, is we had to cross Hudson, and we're talking about crossing with pedestrians on bicycles. We have to cross Main Street or M21. We have to cross the Flat River, and we have to cross the Grand River. So, a lot of challenges involved. So, the study looked at many, many options. And after reviewing it internally with the Lowell Area Recreation Authority, also with the city of Lowell, and then with the DNR and MDOT, who are the primary funders for this type of thing, we came up with this current option, which, as you can see, is called B slash C. It was a combination of option B and C in the study. And it basically does this: when you're on Foreman Road, you use the existing Lowell Area Recreation Trail in front of the school, and you head up G Drive until you get to what I, what I'm calling the Riverside Extension there. It's the trail that the city put in a few years ago through the woods that pops out on Sibley Avenue where your new lift station's going in, just north of Tractor Supply. And then, because we don't have space, physical space, to put a trail for a short section, and on this map, it's, it's the yellow section here, we would use Sibley Street and then Valley Vista to guide riders through town. And it would, the folks would use the street, and walkers would use the existing sidewalks to get to Main Street. The benefit of that is that we're not building trail. It's a pretty common practice these days to use existing streets as a, as a trail option for temporary use, meaning it's not dedicated to, as a trail use, it's obviously, they use the term "sheroes." They put in downtown Grand Rapids, we have streets that have "sheroes" on them, meaning you're going to share the road with the vehicles. But then the walkers have space on the sidewalks. We cross our first obstacle, which is M21, at Valley Vista, which is a lighted signal, so a very safe place for folks to cross. They continue south to Bo's Road, and then they would continue east to Hudson. Going south then on Hudson, it's like, how do we cross Hudson? And again, you will, locals will know that there is an underpass near the river, just south of what is Dr. Raven's property. And so, we envisioned building a trail on the west side of Hudson, parallel to the road, and then using that underpass to cross under Hudson, because we had a hard time figuring out how to get over Hudson. We would then go through the Fairground grounds in some form or another, and then cross the Flat River with a short bridge at that point, putting us into the properties that we refer to as the Moose Property, North Bridge Property, winding our way up to the backside of King Street, so we're getting folks closer to the, it was a desire to get folks close to our downtown area. Maybe there's a kiosk there or something that attracts them. And then working our way down through those existing recreation properties to the South Jackson Street crossing of the Grand River. And there, the study looked at two options: one was using the existing bridge because it's somewhat wide, or building a separate pedestrian bridge. So, in the study, there's, there's an option there depending on what would be allowed by MDOT. So, that's how we envisioned crossing the Grand River. So, now we've crossed M21, we've crossed Hudson, we've crossed the Flat, and we've crossed the Grand. And then continuing south at that point, we would be at the abandoned rail, which is at Grand River Avenue, if that portion was abandoned, and that part has not been abandoned yet, from Mont Calm Avenue to South Jackson. That work is being done right now, and we're trying to, folks are trying to get that secured. So, that basically was the option that was, was looked at. The reason that was selected after looking at it as the preferred option was because in the study, the DNR in conjunction with the National Parks Service, did a study, did a master plan of this 125-mile system. And in that, they identified communities that would be trail hubs, hub communities, and Lowell was selected to be one of those. And so, it was thought that we would want to direct folks through our commercial area or as close to the commercial area as possible. So, that was one reason for doing that. The other reason that was selected at the time was that while, and I have to preface this for those of you who don't know me, I grew up as a long-distance bicyclist, and so I understand the regional trail aspect of this. I'm the kind of person that will want to ride from Owasso to, to Balding or to Alma, the whole route, and back and camp and all of that. But in addition, these trails, a lot of our users are going to be folks that are coming home after work, and they're not going to get on their bike and ride for 50 miles. They want to go out for an hour or so. So, bringing that type of trail through the community expands our local trail system and allows folks who aren't long-distance cyclists to enjoy that. Now, that being said, it's a lot of money. That particular project ended up being between 2.2 and 3.9 million dollars, depending on the bridge that was selected. So, assuming that we can use the existing Grand River Bridge, we're looking at a little over $2 million. Where does that funding come from? Well, because this is the last link in this whole 125-mile system, MDOT, through their Transportation Alternatives Program, and the DNR, through their trust fund and other programs, very interested in closing this. When we met with them as a Lowell Area Recreation Authority, they're very interested in closing this gap. And so, the primary funder would be MDOT. Typically, MDOT and that program looks at funding about 60% of the total project cost. They have funded more in other projects I've been involved with, but it kind of depends on that year and, and what's happening with dollars. With the DNR, there's a potential for trust fund dollars. Without getting into the details, the city of Lowell can apply for those, the townships can apply for those, LARA can apply for those, and then there's some other DNR funds that are potentially available. So, the goal was to try and get that $2 million down to where you're only looking at maybe $100,000 or so that would have to be raised outside of those two major funding sources. So, I was, completed this study, it was approved by MDOT and the DNR, and LARA then directed me to start seeking applications for those two agencies. And that's kind of where we're at right now, is working on the MDOT, the information for the MDOT application. So, I just wanted to explain this close with, there's two, two different trail systems, if you will, but we all are here. We have our Lowell Area Recreational Trail System, and we have the Regional Trail System. They are physically connected in our community, but they're two separate, if you will, efforts. The last thing that we have going on, or the current thing that we have going on right now, is the extension of the Lowell Area Trail on Alden Nash from G Drive down to Main Street on the east side. And those plans are underway, and we're trying to get all the approvals done for those so that can be constructed this summer. Where the ordinance issue comes up is that as we install these things, sometimes we have to get easements from people, either temporary or permanent, to be on their property or to just use their property in a temporary fashion. That particular trail is located in the city of Lowell. It's very complicated. Because LARA's installing it, it's within the city. We have, we've had property owners, whenever I go to ask them about easements, they say, "What's my liability, and who's going to maintain it?" And those are questions that always come up. And so, as we, as a community, the city of Lowell, Lowell Township, and Regent Township, expand this trail system, that's a question that we have to address. How are we going to maintain these? Who's going to be responsible for it? And what are the liabilities? And so, that's how that question came into play. And then I think in the last few weeks, it's kind of got muddled up as to, you know, what, what topic is with, what issue. So, the issue regarding the ordinance really came up on this, this last section, because one of the property owners said, "Gosh, I'd be happy to give you an easement, but can you explain to me how the sidewalk ordinance fits? Is this just a big sidewalk, or what's going on?" Any questions?
Thanks, Dave, that's really helpful. Does it make it easier if we make a linear park out of the trail, where then the city would be responsible for the snow plowing?
Boy, those are operational questions, I think, right. I don't think, from an engineering standpoint, there, there's no issue there, and from a funding standpoint, there isn't any issue. The only thing regarding funding is that when we're doing these funding applications, they always want you to commit to some type, explain to them what your operation and maintenance plan is going to be.
I think this is important enough to the community that, you know, we need to find a way to make it happen. If, and maybe that's a question White can answer better, but I can see it from the homeowner and the property owner's standpoint, they've got just, you know, no sidewalk in front of their place, and they're kind enough to allow us to pass by them, but now we've created additional burden to them for maintenance. And if these are wide enough that they can just roll down with something with a brush on them or a plow truck, and a couple miles really wouldn't take that long to clear it, I think. I think there's just enough value to the community that we need to find a way to make it happen.
And an example, back in Phase 1, is in front of Metric, two of them died, they had a sidewalk in. We needed, again, typically in the city, the sidewalks are five-foot. Now, for the trail requirement was 10-foot, so we had to expand that, needed an easement. And Metric Manufacturing said, "You know, I only have to plow, take care of five feet wide now, so if you put 10 feet in, am I going to, now do I have, I have to take care of 10 feet?" And those, I think that's kind of the question where it came up, sidewalk versus trail. And at that time, in order to get the easement, we said, "We'll take care of, of that, we hired in outside." We didn't, until just recently, we were having, we didn't know that Scott at the DPW was plowing that, and also, the trail system was paying for a company to actually do the plowing also there. So, there's kind of a question where we get into, you know, when we designate trails, but again, where that trail's going to go in front of that property, or example, in the, in the city along G Drive, that was all cement five-foot wide in order to accommodate as the trails. And to get to funding, we had to add another five-foot wide of concrete along that. So, I think some of the questions are, so, you know, and I don't know why we brought this up, is so, if we have something that, you know, is it a trail, and are, you only have to plow five feet of that 10-foot wide? Or those are all some of the questions that I think have, have come up to us, and we don't know how, you know, how to address that, and that's why we need the, the city to kind of, and you've got other clients that have that issue.
Just another clear point that came up that caused this confusion. The whole trail thing started, the city of Lowell, working with the Lowell Area Schools, was successful at being one of the pilot programs and projects in the state of Michigan for the Safe Products to School Program. And that program allowed for funding for the initial non-motorized trail component that was on G Drive. So, from Creekside Park to Alden Nash, that was paid for, and that grant application actually comes from the school system, to make it even more complicated. The schools applied for it, but an ACT 51 agency or a community that's involved in operating and maintaining streets has to be the applicant. So, the city applied for the funds on behalf of the schools. And since then, the city has been plowing that particular section of the trail. And so, then when we turn the corner and we start putting trails down, people said, "So, I assume you're going to be plowing that because you do G Drive?" And so, it's confusing to them as to where, where is this going to stop? The response has always been, "Well, that's part of the Safe Roads to School." But then I've had, and most of you know, I live on Lincoln Lake and Foreman, so my neighbors will say, "But our sidewalks go by the school too, if it's a city that starts plowing those," and, you know, uh-oh. So, that's where some of the confusion came in.
Derek, my question to the city attorney. So, we had this issue with whether or not it's a trail or a sidewalk. Do we really need to, do we really need to modify our ordinances? Or if we just deemed everything as a trail, would that, would that resolve the issue? Some of these issues.
I don't know that you need to change your ordinance. I think it's just a question of interpretation. Once a sidewalk is a sidewalk and only used as a sidewalk, then the adjoining property owner becomes responsible for snow plowing or its maintenance. But once the property owner is, or once the sidewalk is a trail and is designated a trail, and probably, Dave, the best way to do that is to build a 10-foot wide sidewalk rather than a five-foot, then it does not become the adjoining property owner's responsibility, but it becomes the responsibility of someone else. I, I don't know who that someone else might be, but I don't believe the adjoining property owner becomes, and you can't have a property owner only assuming a portion of a 10-foot wide. So, once it becomes a trail, then I would interpret your existing ordinance is to say it is no longer a sidewalk, and the adjoining property owner is no longer responsible. Now, there are, as Dave mentioned, there are trails that use the five-foot sidewalk. And so, if the five-foot sidewalk is still used as a part of the trail, then the adjoining property owner continues to be responsible, in my view. And what usually happens in that case, as Dave mentions, is the bicycles are directed off the five-foot sidewalk and into the street for, what do we call that?
A "shero."
A "shero," for a "shero," which is these lines with these arrows and a bicycle that you see, you see downtown. But if, if, again, if it continues as just the five-foot sidewalk, only used for pedestrians, primarily for pedestrians, then the adjoining property owner continues to be responsible because it's a sidewalk at that point.
So, if it's five-foot wide, it's a sidewalk? If it's 10-foot, it's a trail?
If it's been designated as a trail, yes, by someone.
Should it be that simple?
I think it could be that simple. Everything should be that simple.
And this, this is from a personal standpoint, as I'm trying to separate myself from the trails and everything, because I personally would like to see the city rework their sidewalk ordinance, because, and I know that, that they have never written a ticket or kicked a child off the sidewalk with a bicycle, but our ordinance says that it is illegal to ride bicycles on the sidewalk. Correct? Or am I not?
I, I, yeah, I think there is a, there's also a Michigan Motor Vehicle Code requirement with respect to bicycles on sidewalks, also, but I think we, you know that, yeah.
So, that, that's a Michigan thing, or?
Well, it's, it's pretty common. I mean, it's, you, I think you would see that in most communities, that.
I just don't know why we have it, in that if we're not going to enforce it, and I don't want it enforced, I don't want young kids to be pushed out into the street, why have a, why have a law that you're not going to enforce? And you're basically, I know it's just, but you're, you're making people, you know, technically are breaking the law by, it's in their bikes on sidewalks.
Yeah, it's a safety issue.
Right, I, I agree. I mean, I agree that it's a safety issue to, to allow kids to ride their bikes on the sidewalk and not be forced into the street.
I think it's a safety issue both ways.
So, anyway, that's just my opinion.
I, I was all over the internet trying to figure this out, and I bumped into Land Scene. They said that they are trying to become a bicycle-friendly community, and therefore, they're allowing citizens to utilize sidewalks pathways around the city for transportation, and they'll be available for walking, running, biking, and more. And if they can do it, I, I downloaded all kinds of PDFs and stuff. I just saw so much information on if you're a bicyclist on a sidewalk, you need to verbally say something to somebody you're approaching, and you need to use hand signals, you need to do things in a, in a motor vehicle proper way.
Yeah, and I think this, I pulled the Michigan Motor Vehicle Code, and it says that if you allow bicycles on sidewalks, the bicyclist must give an audible signal before overtaking the pedestrian.
Yep.
And that is an existing law. And that is an existing law.
So where do we go?
Now, the other thing I could talk about, and I'm sure if you're on the internet and found this also, you know, some communities do address special ordinances just to deal with trailways or pathways. And there's lots of other issues that can come into play over the usage of a pathway and what you permit and don't permit on the pathway. And so that's something that could be considered at some point in time. My sense is though that if you develop those kinds of rules and regulations or ordinances, that you'd want to do it in conjunction with the adjoining townships so everything is consistent, at least around here, you have the same sort of rules that apply to everyone. But I, you know, I was looking also on the internet and some ordinance prohibit fishing from the pathway, for example, or hunting from the pathway. I don't know if that's an issue here, but there's all kinds of those sorts of things that you could regulate if you wanted to.
I have a question, Dave. The portion coming down Alden Nash on the east side, structurally, what would that be made up of? Because there's quite a bit of ditch there. And then my other question would be, could a plow truck or some of the equipment we have handle that portion of the structure?
You're talking about these, I think, with technology.
Yeah.
I'm gonna poke my eye out on that. Okay, you're talking about the section from G Drive to Alden Nash on the east side. There is a pronounced ditch there and what we did on the first phase, if you remember, north of there, in that hill that goes down to Foreman Road, there was a ditch there as well. Kent County allowed us to enclose that ditch with a perforated drain system and we built the trail right there. So we're taking out the ditch and replacing it with some open structures, but a perforated drain underneath. There'll be a retaining wall right as you turn the corner from G Drive to Alden Nash because there's a big hill there. And then we're working with some of the property owners to get access to their land to allow for the trail will be built basically over where we're gonna enclose that existing ditch. And yes, they're designed to allow a truck to drive on the, it's a mini road, if you will, from a construction standpoint. On our, just to make sure we understand, our existing trail, however, the bridges are not designed for vehicles to drive over them. They can be, but those particular ones are not.
Thank you. That's kind of our, just wanted to make sure that, you know, we weren't gonna have too heavy of the equipment too. But is that a lot of workforce?
Yeah, and we currently do plow, I think, with pickup truck. The G Drive portion is done with a pickup truck. I might comment that not all trails are 10 feet. That is a requirement if we're using federal funds, they require that we have 10-foot in width. You'll notice if you go to Ada or other communities where they're, if you're not using MDOT funds or federal funds, we can get the trails a little narrower, down to eight feet. I know it's proposed version 18 or. So it's really the MDOT that forces us on that and that's why we have these 14-foot wide pedestrian bridges because you have to have a two-foot clear shoulder between any vertical object. So that's why that's so wide. If you're funding it locally or you're not using federal funds, you can get away with a narrower trail. So it may just be a modification that anything over five foot would be considered a trail, perhaps.
Dave, the other, I could address your other issue and that's the question of liability. If a property owner is requested to give an easement, you're right that in many cases, an easement will be required to be given to someone. And the question is again, who is that someone that receives that easement? Is it the trail radio organization? I'm assuming that's the case. Usually what will happen is that easement agreement will contain an indemnification. So if there is any liability that occurs because of some negligence on that portion of the trail, whoever holds that easement indemnifies or holds harmless the property owner. I just wonder, caution though, obviously with respect to that, that's only so good as the strength of the person who's giving the indemnification. So if it has no assets, that indemnity is probably, isn't worth very much either. So I can certainly understand why a property owner may have some concern with respect to liability.
The question that was raised when I brought up that point was that doesn't the city or the trail system have governmental immunity such that they wouldn't be responsible for that anyway? The property owner challenged me with that and I said, "I can hire my lawyer in."
The answer's no.
Yeah, okay. Should I have you on the phone?
Yeah, it's easy answer, the answer's no.
Yeah. The other question that was raised, but back to the ordinances, when I kind of informally said that this is not a sidewalk, it's a trail, the property owner said, "But the only ordinance you have on your books right now is sidewalk. And unless you define trail in your ordinance, I'm gonna assume that this trail is a sidewalk and I'm in fact responsible for the operation and maintenance." So I think that property owner was encouraging us to define it, if that's all we do is define in our ordinance, to assure them that if it's over five foot wide, they don't have to worry about it.
Well, I think you wouldn't need more than just the size of the sidewalk, though. You'd need someone designated as a trail because if it just happens to be larger than five foot because the property owner put in a wider sidewalk, you don't want to be responsible.
You've got wider sidewalks now, too.
Right. We did talk informally about, did the city want to have a map in its ordinance that defined the trails? So these are the trails that are in our community.
And that might be where the linear park then comes in, it just becomes part of that description, if it falls in that, then it is a trail.
And Mr. Wentz, back to your other point, in the last project, we did have to get several easements. The easements that were in the City of Lowell, the City of Lowell, the easement was given to the city. The easements that we had to get outside of the City of Lowell were given in the Trail Authority at the time.
Why would you know the reason for that?
I don't. I know we were all involved at that time, so I don't recall, but obviously someone directed us to do that.
Interesting. So then the townships, the authority of all the easements, but in the city, the city's responsible?
That's how we did the first project, so I guess I would ask for your guidance this time. The easements that are, we're seeking on Alden Nash are in the city and they're currently would be drafted for the city to all those.
Well, any easements that are in favor of the city or run in the city will require the approval of the city council. You can't give the city an easement without the city accepting it. That would mean the council would.
And I'm sure we'd support that, every way.
To that end, should we bring these draft easements to you for approval prior to negotiation with the property owners or how would you like us to proceed with that?
Then how many easements would we be looking at then?
We're looking at probably three permanent easements, which means we're putting physical improvements on a property that will stay like a trail or a trail and a wall. And then we're looking at a half a dozen grading permits, which are just temporary permits allowing us to access their property, maybe change the grading, but we're not putting anything physically on them.
Thank you. This again is for the, the 1A, this, you know, just make sure we.
Yep. G Drive, so.
I would think we could get a consensus from the council that we're gonna support you in doing this, but until you have easements in place with a homeowner, but I can't see any reason that we wouldn't back you 100% on these. I don't think until you have the easement, there's a point bringing it to us. You know, just because it's drafted, you have to get the homeowner to approve it. At that point, bring it to us and we approve it.
Well, I, just a matter of procedure, I think what I would like to do, especially since we have new folks, is to submit to staff and to the attorney, if appropriate, the language that's being proposed and which is standard or language that we've used here in the past. I can talk to the property owners about the value, but the language should probably be vetted by the staff and the attorney.
That's how I would prefer it. I prefer it come through my office and then I can share it with the city attorney.
Dave, a question, who does the grading work? Who contracts for that?
Well, in this instance, it's a Lowell Area Recreation Authority project, so they have the contract.
And do they require the contractor to have insurance?
Yes, it's exactly the same contract that we use in the city for our construction planning.
And then does Lara carry liability insurance?
Yes.
So you already have insurance. So that you could tell the property owner that also, that Lara is, in addition to the indemnification. My guess is you could probably add the property owner an additional insured at no cost for those portions of your need for easements. And that should, that should make them comfortable.
Adding them to Lara's insurance policy?
Yes, with respect only to that one segment that's on their property.
Would they have to hold the easement then in that case?
No, no, necessarily no. Someone's an additional insured.
Yeah.
I mean, just, they would just be an additional insured on that liability policy because Lara, Lara would be responsible for this pathway, right?
Well, this gets now into the internal question because now we have, now we have a Lowell Area Recreational Trail segment within the City of Lowell. Back to my precedent, the city is maintaining, operating, maintaining the section that's on G Drive. And so.
Would the city can pick up this additional piece then, as you're suggesting?
I'm not suggesting, no. I have to work with the city. I think that's something that needs to be worked out because the city staff has, obviously has a lot of roads to take care of and have limited staff and budget. So as we expand the trail system, it's a challenge for us as a community, how are we going to take care of these and who's responsible for them?
I have a legitimate concern about that. Obviously, that's gonna be an additional cost and strain of the city. Our funds aren't, we're trying to scrape by now and how are we gonna generate funds to take on this additional cost? There's gonna be personnel issues, there's gonna be additional, you know, additional costs for snow. The other concern is, is how will we prioritize this when obviously when we have a large snowstorm, when our priority is streets? How, I mean, how are we gonna deal with that portion of it? Because the fact of the matter is, we have to get the streets done before we could even touch the trail. So it could be a week, if say you got a large, you know, foot of snow, which isn't uncommon, it could be a week before we could even get to it. So those are just things that we have to think about logistically if we're, if the council wants to consider that.
Some of these other communities have already been down this road ahead of us. Saranac, Ionia, Belling, and possibly Greenville. Robert Brown has some experience in that. Robert, would you approach your podium and give us some input and guidance if you could? On how these other communities are handling this?
Yeah, snow removal is a common problem on our trail systems, especially in our developed communities. As Mr. Cantil spoke about, Saranac's a small village, of course, it's a limited village and also a small staff. And they're able to maintain their little under two miles of ashfall segment we have there. The City of Belling has about 2.4 miles that they maintain up there. And then the City of Greenville maintains a little bit, but the Hartland Trail, sister group up to our line, they actually hire out the high schoolers as part of the community service project for the graduation. They get a couple of kids out there after a snowstorm, three bodies, you know, three side by side and they take off down the trail. It takes them a little over an hour and a half to do it. But the funds that they capture at the high school level is what they use to pay for their uniforms. So it's a very nice arrangement that Greenville has. Other communities have embraced it. I know the City of Belling, the trail is not a priority to be plowed. It is a, it's a luxury, it's a convenience, and it gets to it when it gets to it. Thankfully, our city staff up there is able to normally get to within a day or two after a, you know, heavy snowfall. But trail users at that time of year, you know, there's, there's not as many, so that does help. But we also see a lot of snowshoers and cross-country skiers that come up and utilize that trail too. So there's often times, especially in remote areas, between Saranac and Ionia, gets plowed occasionally. And we leave about four inches of snow bank for those cross-country skiers to go. So it's, there's different challenges ahead, but it's fairly simple. And the City of Lowell, I think of the plans I looked at, the most severe, you're looking at four miles of additional plowing and at the least, I think it was two miles and some change. So we're not talking a dramatic increase to go through. The City of Belling uses a snow thrower. The Village of Saranac uses the mob cab with the brush. And I believe the City of Ionia also uses a mob cab with a brush, so.
What kind of donation do they make to the high school in Greenville where those students are helping?
Off the top of my head, I wanna say it's around $1,000. And they divvy that up between the different programs, football, baseball. One city has a girls' team in there also. So they work for the department quite well. And I think in this community with your relationship with your school, I think you have a lot of opportunity there. Again, we're not talking about a lot of trail in this community that you have to maintain.
I think the economic benefit to the community is huge. There's really three different trails that we're looking at here. We've got the water trails of the flat and the Grand River, then we have the North Country Trail and the new trails we're looking at here. We're kind of a trailhead for three different trail systems. And the benefit, from what I've heard, a lot of communities see a 33% increase in business in their communities during the summer when the trails are being used. That will bring additional revenue as more businesses locate here. Some of these expenses that we're looking at incurring are also down the road three or four years before this thing gets going. So we have some time to get on our feet financially, but I just, I think we need to do whatever we can to support this and make it happen. Other opinions?
I agree. So long silent sebs. I think we just have to find a way to make it happen. I don't think there's a question of it not happening. So it's just to make it sure we're better than covered. It makes sense that the city would maintain trails and citizens would take care of sidewalks.
Bruce Barker, and I'm wholeheartedly with Perry, let the kids ride bikes on sidewalks. Two things, I don't want my granddaughters out in the street, number one. Our streets are bad enough and having them out there just compounds the problem. Number two, I'm a driver and I'm an old driver and kids move a lot faster than I can see a lot of times. Keep them on the sidewalks, I certainly would appreciate that. Number two, I work with the DNR on trails. And one of the trail, or two of the trails are down in South Haven. They happen to meet down there, Cal Haven and the Van Buren Trail. They meet in the City of South Haven. South Haven is the conduit, very similar to our situation here. They have a river, of course, they have a lake, and they've got a highway. So they've got very similar problems to ours. The way they solved it was they actually went not down Main Street, they went on the street behind it, all the way through, connected two trails. However, every block has at least two of the bike in the, what was that, Swallows or?
Shero.
Shero, thinking. And they had those really well marked. And then when they did go, eventually they had to go and shares the road. And they made a big sign at the stop signs with a wavy thing and a bike. I mean, it was pretty obvious that you were sharing a road at that part. And it's through residential air.